Yeah, it's safer life in the last two years on qualifications. And I put some padding down on backstage and then got some nice lumpy trash cans with that with that brand. And so the sound system now is fantastic. And so that increases our ability to bring in musical acts as well, which we have some coming. We as well, then our board member has got a concert scheduled for next month, which is exciting. We're working on another one that might be pretty big in the future, which we wouldn't have been able to do without that system. And right now, we have a grant where we're working to improve the theatrical lighting downstairs. So we're constantly, we're constantly growing. We're constantly like updating what we're doing downstairs and what we're doing with the space. But of course, our mission goes beyond that. We have SCAN land and and public arts. But I guess what I'm just trying to say is, we never expected the grant to stay a dollar. I know in in some communities, they're able to continue that sort of partnership, but considering like the financial stability of both the town, I mean, we knew what it was. And now, back in the day before the dollar, we were paying $600, but the thing to keep in mind is, we were actually only paying 200, because the only way for us to sustain that was to rent, to to rent out for Sundays to Atlee Church, and they paid $400 a month, which helped us sustain SCAN, but it also didn't allow us to grow. Like, it didn't allow us to grow our programming. We were very restricted as far as theatrical performances and everything like that, because we couldn't do Sunday matinees ever. We had to work around their equipment and stuff, which they had installed and and had to move a lot of our own, which is now reinstated since they vacated, but we've been able to grow leaps and bounds since they moved onto their own space. So with that, and then the pandemic and the being reduced more, this will be the first time that as we're trying to grow, refills, and keep in mind too, we have no staff. We're 100% volunteer organization. So all of our members and everybody, I am the artistic director of the Educational Community Theater Program, which we call Victory Ball Players, it's a group of SCAN. I do it all on Google. And so we, like, nobody's making money on any of this, and we're just trying to be a partner for the town and increase the arts and the culture of Scottsville, so that it's attractive for people who already who already live in here, but people who would maybe like to live here. Recently, we had a lot of our audience members that would come to shows from pretty counties that are pretty far away, which I've been impressed. Our last theatrical performance, we had a family from Orange County. We have people from Richmond. And that's just really neat and cool to see that. So from from these larger areas and these different areas that are coming all the way to Scottsville, you should see the year for show here. And that's really, really neat. And also increasing the revenue in town by going to restaurants and stuff like that. So we know that financially, the town's also in a pinch. But we just want to continue a really good partnership and and also answering questions about what we may have been, you know, doing over the last four years to improve the space and things like that, and questions that you may have about how we've been raising quality and everything of everything downstairs. And yeah, I think that's, that's about it. We've been able to increase since Atlee's office space. We've never increased the theatrical productions. We now have five a year, two are per cemetery players, three are victory ball players. We've been able to increase classes and programming and continue our partnerships with Federal One Profit, which is a close call, and Charles L. Ballet, who's been getting a little trust. And we hope that more of those types of partnerships. So you have any questions for me before I let you leave?
Thank you. What I would like to say is that Alex love the work session that we perhaps leave things like they are for number one lease. And during this next, next four weeks, my father there and and I, I represent him from staying together and all of Trump's new contract lease. And then we can vote on it. We never voted on it, which council don't work. Yeah, I think the new town, same. But we, I read the lease couple for four or five pounds. And there's a couple of things in there I think we need to check.
Yeah.
But we would do, we would do go into this with the open mind of people playing the reasons it's possible, or if it's okay, you have a book.
Well, I did have a comment. I would like to see, because I've heard people come to the dispatch and describe with SCAN. I don't, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I don't think anybody here would deny the importance of SCAN to this town and this community. The issue is about the rent and the finance, right? So we have a budget problem, you have a budget problem. That's something to share. I haven't heard from SCAN proposal of what we're really asking for. I would like to see a give and take, as the mayor said, to sit down. But if you have a proposal and say, well, we can afford this, then I would say, what else can you do for the community? Can you write grants for the town, you know, commit to certain things for maybe revitalization that would help the town and help SCAN? Something like that.
I think we have way too much on our point as an organization. Like, SCAN, we have a ton on our point. We can barely write grants for ourselves. But I think that the benefit here is a benefit of of kind of, it's like a mutual partnership where any of a love and understanding of how the arts positively impacts community will positively impact the town as a give and take.
But there's no debate.
Yeah, yes, I know. But that was the understanding in the past of why we were always able to work out the limits that we did. It was for that reason.
And not, you know, even at $600, and I can understand, I don't want to get into the numbers, you know, which is a huge off line. But, you know, if you have any business on Dallas Street, what they pay, I I would gather that they're not paying anything.
The difference is, no. And the difference is, we're not a business. And I think that's the fault, is it shouldn't be looked at in that way.
And that's why it's not looked at in that way. So I think we should acknowledge that.
So I don't know if you guys got the letter from Courtney, did you send that out?
Yeah.
Because she had a proposal in that letter of of amount, which was an increase to $400 a month. We understand.
Well, that's good. That's okay, Simon. And if you would.
And I also.
Then the president shared with me earlier this evening, another proposal.
I applaud the efforts to.
I think it's time to give another 30 days over the current agreement. Instead of a meeting, any council person that wants to participate in that, I think she kind of participated in that. And the town staff, or I think SCAN as well.
I have it very much. So if we are not going to make it, it's going to be the one to, I think, as a supporter of the arts, as a, as a very involved in the arts, supporting the arts and everything else, my career in leading puts more in a financial position where they are no longer able to pay, you know, that 600 a month. And it causes a disbandment. I think that would be trouble. I think we could do that. I I yeah, I very much like the part of the day.
So I'll hear most of the opinion. Go get with Tom here or figure out any time we can get together and let me know. So I'd be there.
Yeah, and then just put it on everybody's calendar. And that way, whoever wants to.
You know, Courtney's suggestion of 400 a month, that would fly with me, but there's a couple of other things in the lease I would like to do. I'm tweaking a little bit.
Yeah, and that's the thing. It's like, I think in the past, it's always been a sit down meeting with the the sound manager, the the hotel administrator, and the the president of SCAN, and then we're representative of the council and SCAN in the past, where it's been negotiated. And this time around, there was like a step missed somewhere. And then the negotiation of the actual lease happened.
Now, that's fair.
Let's get that set up and then when it was hammered out, hopefully we could find something.
I'm sure we can counter.
There are, there are team members who have asked us to speak that I, they speak.
Really quick.
I've made, I've made, I've made the solution, but I'll say that for the meeting that we're going to set up with that, so I have a board that I want to see this.
So just make it quick, because we basically already settled this matter.
Do you state your name?
Yeah, I'm gonna make this short and sweet. My name is Ruth Ollinger Aldridge. I live at 286 Hummer Road, Scottsville, just across the river. I've lived here for over 25 years. I worked full time at the University of Virginia for over 25 years, serving in the medical and educational administration roles. I'm here to speak about SCAN as the vice president and the impact of arts in the community. As we've all discussed, it's very important to have arts in the community. I think pre-pandemic and post-pandemic, we're socialized now to a different environment, and people are seeking ways to interact with their communities. And we offer a low cost way to do that. I don't think any of us are going to argue about that. At the end of the day, the money has to be paid. I get that. I think that we can work with collaboration with other art centers. I actually was on a virtual meeting with Virginia Beach Arts. They're suffering from the same things, beating budgets. Every university is doing the same thing. Budget cuts are all across the board. I think it's important, not just because arts in the community builds a community, but it also has a mental and physical aspect to it. Working in medical field, we have a serious issue with suicide rates with children. And I think when you get children involved with the arts, you're impacting their lives, because during the summer, most kids don't have, you know, the school systems to support the social needs that they have. And I think with collaboration with the Louisa Art Center, which I'm in communications with, because I grew up in Louisa County, I actually went to that school where the art center is. The town office is the same setup. They rent, the art center rents from the town. I think as a collaboration, if we're given the 30 days to have a meeting and kind of go over a a plan that we can work together, collaborate, I think that would be beneficial, not just to the town. I think Tom Green has been, in his letter, presented a way that we not only impact the community from the arts round, but we're impacting the economic status for what's happening in this town. So with all that said, I'm, I'm very eager to talk and sit down. I do grant work at UVA. Obviously, you've done a lot of grant work, and at the end of the day, the numbers have to crunch, and you've got to make it work. So I think as a town, I think maybe there was some miscommunication, but we're on the right path now. So thank you.
I agree.
But I appreciate the comments about the partnership too. But I wanted to make, make sure everyone's there, you know, that, you know, this is, I guess, the very essence of reflection on SCAN's importance for anything else. Certainly not on my thoughts. So I'm very happy, like you all, coming to Good Day, doing this as a partnership, because we all are in the same stage of budget budgets, you know, so.
My name is Ricky Ma, but it's 65. I'm also a board member of SCAN. Thank you for your time, man. I'll do it quickly, we're only here for a minute. But I did just want to say that, you know, do you think it contributes to Scottsville in other ways? In your roles, we actually were the founders of Pardon Your Day in Scottsville, and how they happen is because, plus, I do think from the theater, it's on shows, it brings business in the town. So although the rent may not be, you know, it could certainly be higher if we're paying market rates. I think we do bring out there some intangibles to the town that do have financial consequences. That's all. So, thank you.
So I'm just going to say that I, that I have, I'd be happy to bring my proposal to the next meeting in one day, my board members becoming presenting. And I think we, I think we can learn ourselves.
Yeah. Yeah. We're good. We're good. Usually we agree on other things.
I agree with you. There's some terms in that lease that I'm going to go against.
And I'll, I'll work that off on the lease.
Right.
Of sports, everyone wants that.
Okay, so at the work session, we talked about issuing a potential, and you have it in your package, E911's raft ordinance. It should be in addition to the signage ordinance that is already on the books. This is specifically an ordinance that mandates E911 reflective signs for every property in the town boundaries.
Not just the perspective.
Not the surface area. What we talked about is we buy program, we got a part of the grant, and we're proposing to fund the installation of E911 signs, houses in the historic area within that one. So that would be phase one. And phase two would be looking at requests. There was a comment from Jim Bowling at the meeting, who said, maybe there isn't a need for a separate ordinance. Maybe we can add a paragraph on the existing ordinance. But I don't think that's actually really practical in this case, because the ordinance shouldn't work. I mean, but it would lose strength if it doesn't have this specificity of where these signs should go. If we just have a paragraph that says, every property should have an E911 sign. There's no specificity to the color, it should be where it should go, that type of thing. And that, the point of this whole effort was consistency for the sake of first responders, that we gave guidance where the signs should go. And so the placement would be universal across the town. So this is what this ordinance addresses. It has a table, if you look in there, it's all corrected, it's printed yet. Has a table of different types of properties and where the sign should go. We talked about ARB recommended green signs. And I was looking for a sort of not garish green, but something more muted, like a forest green, and that'd be mounted on either side, right or left of the front door for properties that are, you know, on the historic roads in town.
Stick them on posters up?
You'd have to, you'd have to, in this case, mount them on the house.
But I mean, they're stick them, how do they attach? Are they all screws?
So.
And so you're going to have to screw these up? And they're, it's their liability to mess up. And what do they do with the old signs? Like, some of them already have two signs, one or two signs already.
Yeah.
What do they, do they keep those up? Do they have two signs in the house, green signs?
We have to, no, we haven't discussed.
I just want to get double by side. See, they have these outside and they have a blue side, and then they have this one. So it's like, you can't miss it.
I still am concerned about the placement. Now, I understand. Where there's sidewalk, there's no law or whatever, placing it on a building, very much sense. I'm still concerned with placing them on. So like, for example, this one here says, other properties within 50 feet of the road mounted on a mailbox post. None of us down here have mailboxes. We all get up here, so we don't have mailbox posts to mount them on. Right. That's why the historic properties within town are unspecified, it's not listed. So, but is that? So if you're a property within a historic district, right, you would mount it vertically to the right or left of the roof. And and that's where I have a concern, because the point of, like, so me, for example, living in an apartment down hell. I thought the purpose of the reflective signs was that where the car is coming, it hits, like, they're like, oh, we we stop here. You know, usually it's like on the lawn at the front of the house. They will never see my door faces, like, if the road is going this way, my door faces this way. So driving by, they'll never, they'll never see it. I think Chief Jenkins, I think Chief Jenkins addressed that. He said, when they drive by, they look for that, and they can. No, 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 no. You can't see my door in the street. They would have to know my front door is not visible. But what would happen is, the sign in the front of the street would have the main property. There would be an indicator of that. There were more residents in that building than what was there.
There are, there is, you know, there are.
So, so I would have two even. One thing interesting about that, Ron, is there are properties in town. In the current ordinance, we're supposed to, everybody's supposed to have numbers on it. And there's properties with no numbers. We don't even enforce the one way hat.
The situation I have is, I don't, I have an idiot, but I don't have anything that runs on a, on a street. Which means, I mean, I want to put five number on a post and end with the common driveway, which I do not own, just one driveway. You don't have to build on a walk-in's property, or that's a building on a labor property. That's not going to happen.
Well, you know, how did, then how did Buckingham and the banders, because they did this, well, and they had a whole staff. So the difference between Scottsville and the other counties is that they mandated and they sent personnel up to every house. And they put them where they were supposed to be according to the rules. Right? We don't have the staff or the money to do that, right? So we're trying to do the best we can to get a guidance on that.
When you're going to rip your box off, or you're out, you should put lots of reflective markers on it, so.
Right.
And then the body has published the digital plan.
Yeah, well, I, I can't imagine. If it's your driveway, that easement would have, like, it would have to allow. That's right. But my driveway is like. I don't, I don't want the rule to say line has to be on my door. I, I want it on the lawn, where if an, if an ambulance is driving up, they know. You know, and I'm wrong, because actually, I've received them on lawns. That's why I'm confused about why they don't have them on the house. Some of like, we have them on house. And I think to Bill's point, which is a good one, there is a liability to put in a lawn house. When I talked to Chief Currie, he said, makes sense to have it on the door. That's why I brought it here. But the nice thing about having it in the lawn is that you can get a post that, you know, like a T-post, right? That you stick in a lot, and you put the sign on the T. It's harder for maybe, like, residents in the back where they don't have a yard, you know what I mean? But I might be able to work with that. Yeah, I mean, like I said, we down here, I understand, you know, if you live in an apartment, you know, where you have no lawn, sidewalk, that's different. But if you, if you have the curb capability of it, I think that's better. People see us that smarter, huh? Willing to fuck this up.
Want to do this, not all the way. Right? And I have a part of it, so this you with forcing homeowners to do this as well. They're free to do what they want.
Well, I mean, in such an all pretty external portion of a restored building, you have to go through the ARB to that.
Well, we, you know, we got approvals. We already got approval through the ARB, so that's not an issue. But I think it is more practical to do it on the lawn. And I understand what you're saying about, you know, it's my property, I should do it on lawn. But again, other counties have mandated this, so that their first responders can effectively get to someone in an emergency or find a place if there's a fire. The other thing that we talked about, or I talked about with them, was educating the public about how to call 911, because a lot of people, when they call 911, they give them the main property number. They don't tell them they're in the back. And there's no way to know that there's properties in the back of the building. So we're trying to.
Well, I was just saying, no, it's so, it's so complicated with this. So many different houses in the city apartments have six, A, B, and C, A, B. And some are off the street, and some are. And I would, I would think mandating that you're, you know, address is not clearly visible, cannot be read. And it's not in the E911 system, then you have to have a sign. But if you already have, there are some that you can't miss, you know, and everybody knows where they are. But if there's some that are not, why have a, you don't want, maybe you ought to put a second one. Just because it would be.
Well, if you're a new person, you can remember, if you have a new person coming to start, right, and they're trying to locate a property, it would be easier if that new rich.
Right. Once they have GPS, I have the nine one one, it's like.
Yeah, but then how does the GPS tell that Meredith's apartment is at the back of the building? They're going to give the front of the building address, and then they pull the truck to the lawn and don't realize, like, we drove, right? If they pull the truck to the front, the apartment is in the back. Really, the truck needs to go around the corner and be passed around.
Everybody here in the auto read it again. Everybody there needs to read it. Just insisting, or they just, you know, already got those warnings, and we get that. And then in the next work session, work session, we send air notes, just to watch each side, which go, which I didn't change. Yeah, they could have adjusted. So I know you did a lot of work, I think, the two point was, yeah, I appreciate that, but we, we pay so much.
Well, we don't enforce the one we have. We should have address markers on all buildings and sub-b buildings and whatnot. And I don't know how to solve that problem if we're not going to enforce the ordinance under books. Money. I mean, that, 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 you know, have to go around, see who doesn't have it, or maybe they have 90 days to correct it, or fines for it, I suppose. Well, fines should be part of the order, right? I'm sure fines are part of the ordinance. If you look at the photo here, Jim Bowling, I originally had $200, and I thought, well, maybe it's a little steep for town, I'll cut it down to 100. He said $2,500 is an, an enforceable, you know, something with a lot of oops behind it, ever get people to do that. And listen, nobody's going to go around being the address police. Address police. So, but people should, you know, it, it's important, right? So I don't pay if you don't want approval, but then we have to return.
Well, how many, how many signs should get for that credit?
It was, it was, it out $35 for how?
Five or seven sites. So it's about.
Those originally like $8,000.
A hundred and fifty sites.
Well, we didn't buy.
Why is, why do the grant money contingent on this ordinance?
Pardon?
Why is the grant money contingent on this ordinance?
Because it was for, the purpose of the grant is to do it for all properties.
Yes, but I mean, I don't think, do you think they wouldn't allow you to use the money?
I don't think about that, I'm on the grant.
We already don't have enough for this whole thing.
That's why we, but we didn't get the whole, full amount for the grant. So we scoped down the area and size of the area to adjust for the money that we did not get.
I have this question about the numbering thing. The numbers won't change. Is this all on the left side? Would be odd.
No, the numbering is set by the town. But what it's not is like, if I, you know, if I build a mother-in-law suite in my backyard, it should have an address marker and an E911. And with this ordinance, it's saying that all properties, apartments, ADUs, whatever it is, need to have an E911.
And I still suggest that we all read both words, make some notes, and let's discuss it again at the work session. That's okay.
Just set up the card where you, how you arrange it.
I'll send it to council.
And my last issue here, it's lost out, is town infrastructure.
Yeah, so I want to be clear, set on the agenda for this discussion. We followed up last work session on our dates on our, on our conversation with our auditors. And then. And then, um, uh, town clerk sent out last week an email, kind of brainstorming idea, uh, with council. Uh, we got some running commentary during the Fourth of July, and kind of joked about it last week, but, uh, uh, that Colorado is not in great shape, and I wanted to kind of have a conversation with town council. Start thinking a little bit creatively, those suggestions to reach out to other municipalities, also, and look at any, um, anything on their fleet that they might be able to, I believe that's how we got our gator from the county. And the Colorado came from the service authority, uh, that same way. Uh, but, uh, if anything, that email and kind of this, it's going to be a perspective on whether.
One, one stores that state auctions, there's many vehicles, you see a lot of used supercar, what's a good idea?
But that's, that, you buy them as is, right? You don't know what you're getting.
They start to provide a service factor.
Yeah, and usually, usually stuff like that is more, more maintained, everything else around, obviously have regular crews.
These obviously, people, a lot of people love these trucks, and sometimes there's limits, generally, it's a state rule. The only I'll say is twelve thou, or thirteen thousand for a hundred forty five thousand per dollar. That a light duty truck do. That's a lot, not to say it's not a red truck, but I just put the picture here, but, actually, we see these options first.
Yeah, I think we should also be concerned about the timing though, because, you know, this, I think we understated where the truck, the current truck is. From my understanding, it's leaking gaps.
Yeah, that's.
Right, this is not just like it's in bad shape, I mean, this is a personal safety hazard.
I think we, first of all, get a mechanic's report, you can take a hit, have them listen, what, what it costs. You know, how can it last, or what, what it costs to fix, or can it be fixed, you know, leaking, you know, if I just have it leak about somewhere. Just, you know, I guess, yeah, that's it, and also I think we need to know how much money we have available in the budget for, for the, for the place in truck.
Well, that's, that would have.
Well, that's, yeah, you know, but we, we get a police truck, or they're getting the least.
The thing with the police truck, they're going to be in here a
Yeah.
Good year out.
Okay.
But, and they get the truck, they find the truck, they get it wrapped. They get everything inside of it, that's the problem with the USC.
Maybe you have some of the jazz too, what you think about, is that, I asked him about the truck, is he, I don't think we know, it's, it's.
What's the oil change growing up in Central Line penalties? Just respecting that.
Yeah, we're definitely worried about him, but he's a white truck, uh, forward.
Now that one's backed up, yeah, across the street.
That's true. That was the one that, that was the one that slips that in here. Yeah. Pick the building.
Yeah.
I didn't know that, yeah, everybody else named her. And, and joking, uh, joking aside, having both of them, let a little bit of war re-shoot and stick them, put them off.
Yeah.
Or you got a total sale. Yes, I could, but, yeah, just relating to the truck, the last time we part of it. We worked with the county, and Jane Getwater's recommendation, she's on the board with the service authority, that's one of them. And they had a truck that was going to be forty eight hundred dollars for their sale, and the county supervisors agreed to sell it for thirty hundred dollars. It was in good shape, it had the, it had the light already on, and the rack, back racks, so something wouldn't come through the back, or whatever. And it was in service still shape, and we've enjoyed it a number of years, I mean, I think it was some neglect in this past times. Don't know about the gas leak, maybe we can fix it, maybe can.
How about?
So one way to call.
I think the fire department has gotten a lot of free vehicles, the cars that they have, and also the rest of the squad did it previous year. So I think we really ought to look and, and speak and talk to them next questions, because I think some low hanging fruit is out there to save us and not spend a ton of money on a new truck, and a police truck with thirty seven thousand miles on it, certainly doesn't need to be replaced yet. So, it's my concern.
When we talk.
I'll be glad to help anybody if they want to investigate that.
Okay, see what you can come up with, pass along Javier.
I'll do that.
I know.
Right.
I mean, we never. I'll ever, I shouldn't say, wait, I don't know, the else guys, see her here for my new supervisor. Oh, since that, since that. But I won't be that.
I mean, I was glad to have that change, if you like, just ask what's available, or what can they do.
Well, Javier said he was going to follow up with, like, she's.
Follow us with this transfer.
I know, with the local agencies about potential, they might call there.
Because other municipalities might be, hopefully not, kind of what we're doing, getting rid of whatever. Some of these services, they have rules that they have to, just like the police. So they're in a little bit better shape.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
Any other thing, talk up, you know?
All right, I'm just saying that I want to see, you know, what is the decision made on truck, nobody's selling super.
Let me grab a little bit of a report on what we have now, and then start taking those leads, if the mayor can help with, uh, the county that, uh, started.
I'll park the bike, and, you know, tell you about the research, remember back, and say, oh, we got a free truck shop now.
Well, we should ask them if they can come over there. Yeah, just to have him here, it's nice to have Don here, we only have a bunch to see and contact.
And then, uh, I can record that work session, that, just to have.
Anything else, want you to turn seven minutes later, sexual slavery, the natural, thank you so much. Thank God.